Okay. I'd like to call this June 3, 2020, meeting of the Corporate Oyster Cooperative School Board to Order. And because this is a remote meeting, I have to again read the statement about conducting remote meetings. So I'll do that now. As Chair of the Oyster Cooperative School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the school board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following number: 1-6-0-3-7-6-6-5-6-4-6 with an ID code 4-6-1-3-6-2 hashtag, or by clicking the following website address: http://www.orcstd.org/stream. B. Providing public access of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Team or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the ORCSD Board Agenda for June 3. C. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call 6-0-3-2-8-0-4-2-0-2, or email at orcstd-video@orcstd.org. D. Adjurning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will adjourned and be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call. Let's start by taking roll call attendance with each member state. When each member states your presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Okay, and just get the numbers. Sorry. I had it right here. Okay, we'll make a list.
I'll start off. Kenny Rotner, I'm here. I'm in a room by myself.
Denise Day, I am alone, but my husband Timothy Day may pass through during the meeting.
Okay.
Dan Klein, I'm here, and no one in the room with me.
Okay. Brian Sisteros, here alone. Nobody in the room with me.
Al Holland, I'm here. I'm alone.
And good evening, Michael Williams. I'm here and alone.
Tom Newkirk, I'm here, and I'm alone. Yeah. The approval of the agenda, I would like to add, as a discussion item, a response to the letter from Elise Leckman, which I'd like to have the first thing on the discussion items. That would follow the committee, Finance Committee update, because it's obviously related to that. So, and I also have a question. We have back information on like the COP renovations, but I don't know if that's part of the discussion. Is that something you want to bring up as part of the Finance Committee report, Al?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Okay, okay. So that's not a separate item then. Okay, with that, with that addition, could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Denise. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brian. Kenny Rotner?
Yes.
Denise Day?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Sisteros?
Yes.
Al Holland?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes. The minutes are, the agenda is approved by vote of seven to zero. Dr. Morse, are there any public comments?
No public comments tonight, Tom.
Okay. Approval of the minutes for June, or sorry, May 20, both regular and non-public minutes. So I don't know whether we want to have a motion for each of those, or whether people want to separate out. Denise Day?
I'll start by, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for May 20.
Moved by Denise. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brian. Are there changes? I didn't see any. So, so vote to approve the minutes, the regular minutes. Kenny Rotner?
Yes.
Denise Day?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Sisteros?
Yes.
Al Holland?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes. The regular minutes for May 20 are approved. Could I have a motion to approve the non-public minutes?
I'll motion to approve the non-public minutes of May 20.
Moved by Denise. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Brian. Corrections? Kenny Rotner?
Yes.
Denise Day?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Sisteros?
Yes.
Al Holland?
Yes.
Tom, Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes. So the non-public minutes are also approved. So come to announcements, accommodations, and comments from the board. Does anybody have something to say here?
I do.
Denise?
I just want to commend Massway for a fantastic expression session remotely, very creative, you know, different performances. It was, it was well done. Also, Mouth of the River articles that people have been writing, and I'm still trying to access the high school art show. I'm having a little trouble with that, but I'll get there.
Okay, thank you. Kenny?
I had a question to ask, and if the information was given already, I'm sorry, but I was just wondering, Dr. Morse, if you could comment maybe later about what will happen with the kind of wonderful meal program in food delivery we're doing during the school year. What kind of plans do we have for the summer? So when you think that's appropriate to delve in, that's just something that I've been wondering about.
I'd just like to thank Andre Valen Construction and the people that took us on the tour of the construction site last Friday. It was really an amazing experience, and I hope everybody in the board has a chance to see that. And really, everybody, you know, the community leaders that had a part in it, to just walk the site and to see the geothermal system being put in, and to see the, you know, the foundations being put in, and just to actually physically experience the space. So you can see, this is where the eatery is, this is where the learning commons is, this is where the library is, and to just get that sense of the space, having seen so many diagrams of it, to actually be in the actual space, I think was really very powerful. So I hope, I hope everybody gets a chance to do that, and I hope we all get to maybe do it as the building progresses. It's fascinating. Other comments? No? Okay. So we move down to Assistant Superintendent Todd.
Thank you, Tom. It's good to be back. It's been a couple of months since I presented to the board, and I just want you to know, I'm still a big fan. I've been following you the whole time. Number one rated show in my household. You should, you should have the flyer for the REACH program in your backup. A little bit of a, actually, let me start by saying one thing. The town of Durham is incredibly fortunate to have Rachel Gazowski as their Director of Parks and Recreation. She is an incredibly energetic and optimistic person, and she really has been instrumental in working with the two school district coordinators for REACH, Suzanne Tomachewski and Dan Hammond, to basically make lemonade out of lemons during a situation that was very difficult. Just about the time that we broke for remote learning, that was, we had just completed preparation of our new catalog, which, Al, I was very excited to share with you, because it was going to be hosted on Schoology, and it was... So we clearly delayed plans, and because we weren't sure what was going on. And then eventually, I did survey the community, and for the most part, it was clear that there wasn't ample support to run the traditional REACH program. Traditionally, REACH is, starts the week after the 4th of July. We run anywhere from 10 to 14 camps, serve about 80 to 100 kids a week, but it's a very intimate program with kids in small groups, and, you know, the ability to provide social distancing and all the things that the CDC was recommending just wasn't there. So we really, by early May, we turned our attentions to trying to come up with an alternative type of a program we could run that would, at least to some extent, give families an opportunity for their, to have their kids be active, and do some of the traditional camp experiences. What we came up with, or, this is really the brainchild of Rachel, is really what we're calling Reach in a Box, or Reach at Home. The concept is this. We have developed, we have four district staff who were, that would have been instructors, working as a team, along with Rachel, Dan, and Suzanne, to plan basically six themed weeks around different topics. The first one is the week of July 29, 3. It's called Blast Off to Summer. The theme around that really ties into Independence Day, ties into rocketry, it ties into a bunch of, you know, celebratory type activities. Each week is, the instructors are planning a series of activities. Some of them are art activities, some of them are STEM science type activities, some of them are family games, some of them are scavenger hunts, but it's a whole range of things. And basically, what we've asked community members to do, and since we've never done this before, we had no idea what the demand would be. So we said, all right, well, let's, let's start by what we think our capacity might be. And so we set the number of 25 per week as being something we could handle. What we learned very quickly, we opened up the registration last week, and within like three days, every single one was full, and we have wait lists in the 30-plus range for each week. So, we are now in the process of taking a step back and say, okay, well, all right, clearly, this is an idea that has, has interest in it. Let's start looking at our capacity. So later this week, Rachel, I, Dan, and Suzanne are meeting again to talk about whether we can expand capacity, and how many more people we can serve through this program. One of the things that it's important for people to understand is that REACH is a self-funded program, and typically, the way we pay our instructors is through the fees that people are paying. And in order to make Reach in a Box work, we really wanted to only charge people for the baseline of the costs of the materials in the box. So a couple of variables we're still looking at to determine if we can expand capacity. One is supplies. Can we get all the things we need? Rachel, who has done a lot of the ordering, is, you know, really frantically working through Amazon, and Michaels, and all those different places that provide these kind of supplies, and trying to get all these things lined up. And as soon as we have a better picture of our ability to collect supplies, we're going to look at expanding that number. The, I guess, the moral of the story, though, is it's clear that this community is very supportive of the concept, and so we're running, we are running six weeks of camp. We are going to serve as many kids as we can. One of the ideas we're also looking at doing, kind of alongside of the Reach in a Box, is to use the school district website and/or the Durham Parks and Rec Facebook page to push out just activities in general that don't necessarily tie to materials in the box, but that are things that families can do, even if they're not able to fully participate in the Reach in the Box program. So, the other piece that I just want people to know is, we are also looking at ways to deliver the materials to all the families. There's, there's a number of variables we're looking at. Durham Parks and Rec, in their infinite wisdom, bought a couple of vans a few years ago, and so certainly, that's one aspect that we're looking at. And then we're also going to be looking at having a drop-off in a pickup location, probably at Durham Parks and Rec to do that. So, again, first time we've ever done this. It's been a very successful program. I think that the themes are general enough that they can attract the whole gamut. Typically, in REACH, we run programs that are targeted specific age groups, so we tried to create themes that would be able to create activities that would be sort of a K to eight thing. One of the things that Rachel is also going to do is, she's going to utilize this various social media aspects that Durham Parks and Rec have, and, you know, encourage kids over the course of time to be posting pictures of themselves, doing the activities, and all those kind of things, and trying to really create sort of a community feel about it. And we're hoping that we can, we can at least serve some of the need that families have to keep their kids active. One of our key goals in creating these things was, we did not want it to be just an extension of screen time. So the activities are things that are encouraging kids to be outside, to be able to, you know, to do things with their hands, to do projects, that kind of thing. And obviously, like I said, it's been very popular so far. So I'm happy to take any questions if people have any.
I just have a comment. So I actually ran into Rachel last week when I was cycling out of Doe Farm, and then this morning, we had a group that was sitting, talking, and one of the, we were trying to figure out, how do you do, for parents that are working, how do they do Reach in a Box? It's like, is there any way that in a neighborhood, you could cooperatively work so, if you felt comfortable with some other kids, somebody could supervise, particularly younger kids, could supervise the project, and then maybe trade off? And so we, we really didn't, I don't know how to do that. I don't know how logistically to do that. The second thing that we talked about was potentially doing some half, it's impossible to run an eight-day or eight-hour day camp, but is it possible to do some half-day field trips? And by that, we're talking about, I mean, I kept thinking about being out on Lee Hook Road and having kids show up and go fishing, or do a hike through Doe Farm, which is possible to run. Unfortunately, we probably would limit to about 10 kids, and if we did multiple trips, it would have to be the same 10 kids that do it. That would fill in about a millisecond. And so I think, as you guys meet, an interesting thing, we just don't have, Durham doesn't have the staffing to run, say, four different sections of that. And so, my question would be to Lee and Madbury, could you help provide some staffing, and we could expand maybe one, maybe two of those concurrently, or three of those concurrently, if we had enough staffing, instead of doing 10 kids, maybe do 30 kids? So I think it's an interesting point of discussion. I wouldn't imagine you could do it until, say, July. That would give like a month to kind of work out some of the logistics and see how the CDC's things change, but it's an interesting idea that I think cooperative you should pursue.
Yeah, we actually did, at our last meeting, we did have some conversation about it, because as you note, the CDC guidelines are evolving. Obviously, the stay-at-home order in New Hampshire goes through June 15. Presumably, there are going to be more relaxed guidelines at that point. And so it is entirely likely, at some point in the summer, there may be more comfort with offering some things. And I know that the challenge we have at the district level is, in order to get our staff signed up, and in order to do it, we generally start talking to them in February to get them committed in the summer. And so, it's challenging for us to staff it. That being said, there definitely, there is a possibility in mid-July, or late July, or early August, okay, things are more comfortable for that. Can we offer a one-week session, whether it's one or two or something? But it's an evolving situation. So we are definitely talking about that. I hadn't thought of reaching out to the Lee and Madbury Recs to engage them in it, but I do think, you know, you mentioned neighborhoods. I do think one of the things that is going to have to take place, in order to do that, is families have to talk to each other and sort it out, because one of the things we're learning, and I know Jim will talk about it in a little bit, around our survey around remote learning, is there's a wide range of comfort levels people have with being in groups, and what they're comfortable doing, and so forth. And so, it's much more of an individualized thing in terms of what you're comfortable with, and if there's a group of neighbors in your neighborhood that are willing to facilitate, you know, implementation of the Reach in the Box activities, that's great. One of the reasons we chose to do the Reach in the Box is it didn't tie it to any particular timeframe. So just because the boxes come out theoretically on the idea it's a Monday-through-Friday thing, a family could do these activities at any point that works for them. It could be, you know, you know, Saturday morning, or whatever. And so, and it also, even though the box is tied to a week and a theme, it's theoretically, you could be doing the activities all summer long if you chose to, depending on how you did them. So there's, there is a lot of flexibility in how people do it.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is, we, you mentioned like some ideas of what to do, and around this area, there's just some tremendous resources. The problem is, with COVID, you can't have everybody go to the same spot at the same time. And so, putting together a list, like, a really cool place that I found is, if you go across 125 up on High Street, there's the Fox Conservation Area, and there's a small pond there, and it's for 15 and under for fishing. So if we could put together a list of some of those resources, what they are, and spread that out, so people could do it on their own, it's just a list of potential activities.
Yeah, you reminded me of something too, Al. One of the, one of the types of activities that's going to be built in is a number of scavenger hunt type activities that will involve going to local places like Wagon Hill Farm, Doe Farm, you know, Maud Jones Forest, places like that, just to get kids out and doing things.
Okay. Great.
Great.
Um, you didn't mention, Todd, so the board knows, you actually had twice as much interest in Reach in a Box than you had capacity to deliver. So there is a massive waiting list. The approach was incredibly popular.
Yes. Yeah, we're actually very pleased by it. Now, we just got to figure out, because obviously, we'd like to meet whatever demand is there. It's just a question of what can we, what can we manage? And so we're going to review that, and hopefully, we'll be able to meet as much of the demand as possible.
Sounds like a good problem.
Yeah, it is. It is. Thank you.
Okay, Superintendent's report?
Yeah, so why don't I just start by addressing Kenny's question? Kenny, I put it in the last two superintendent newsletters, and I did do a quick report at the last board meeting, but it's always worth repeating related to the food service program. As we all know, Doris and the nutrition staff did a fabulous job, and it was incredibly well-received by the parents. And in many ways, it provided a physical representation of the school district daily to parents and children. And so, in addition to providing food to 500 to 600 families daily, it also was a unintended tremendous public relations boon for the district. Parents were so thrilled with the opportunity that was presented, and a piece of that was served impetus, because we happened to be at the end of a three-year grant that allowed the district to provide food to anybody in the district who wanted it at no cost, because the grant allowed that. That grant ends this month. And so, the next part of this transition on the food service program is that our bus drivers and nutrition workers still have hours to put in, and so they'll be working through June 12. So, food delivery, the way that people have been used to it since we went into remote learning in March, will occur through June 12, being delivered by our drivers. After June 12, because the grant still isn't over, Doris will be providing food to families with, but not using the drivers. And so the last two weeks of June, food will be able to be picked up at the high school or the Massway School. We tried to choose two locations that would be relatively convenient to our families. And so that, that will occur. Then Doris is surveying parents, you know, as of July 1, that grant is gone. And so she's surveying our parents to see how many people would like to have, that continue the program, but under the pay-as-you-go umbrella. So those families that qualified for free breakfast and lunch would continue to qualify. And then those families who qualified for reduced would continue to qualify for reduced, and those families who just found the convenience, something they wanted to continue into the summer, could, but they would have to pay the cost of the meal as if they were in the school. So that's how we would continue the program into the summer. Just to give you a sense, Kenny, we calculated the cost of delivering the food. If we were trying to extend it ourselves, and just the transportation cost alone are about $4,500 a week, which is why we really couldn't pick it up, because we didn't budget $4,500 a week through the summer, and nor would we normally. So the program in its current rendition ends June 12. It will continue to June 30, if parents wish it to be, and it would be a pickup program. And then on July 1, we would revert to the tradition of free, reduced, and full pay, if parents want to continue. Any questions on that? Okay, thanks. So I'm just going to open up an email that will guide me through the next piece of this. What I really want to talk about at this point is the survey. The survey we sent home to parents was incredibly well-received. The parents, 30 to 40% responded. The students, a little bit higher than 45%, and the staff in the 90% range. I just want to start out by saying that tremendous credit goes to our faculty and our support staff. Quite honestly, remote learning would have been an abject failure if our parent educators weren't there to support our teachers, and our teachers were asked to do something that no teachers in the country were asked to do, which is to completely convert from an onsite program to a remote program. And we literally had three days to do the training. And when we did the training, we thought it was going to be a two-week window, and then the governor extended that to the remainder of the year. So as I go through, you know, this, this presentation, in many ways, it'll feel like I'm being perhaps cold and analytical, but I just really want to start out by saying, the work that we did, given the time we had to do it, and having never done it before, is kudos to not just our, our teachers and our supports, our parent educators, but also to our custodians, our bus drivers, our cooks, our tech integrators, our technology staff that supported the technology. It really was an all-in effort, and I want to emphasize how much I appreciate the efforts that they all did. But having said that, I'm a firm believer in, no matter how good you're doing, you can always do better. I would say to the board that you have the unedited, complete report from the parents and guardians, from the faculty and support staff, and also the students. And when I report this out in my newsletter this week, what you have that I won't put out into the public are literally hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of comments made by each of those groups. And, and they, they were really illuminating, and also reinforced some of my perceptions as superintendent, and also taught me new things. So for So first of all, I want to thank everybody who responded to the survey. You know, to have that kind of response is incredible. And just to remind everybody, this wasn't a scientific survey. It was an all-in survey. Anybody who wanted to respond to it could. And yet the turnout for the survey was amazing. So some of the things we learned is we have to have clear expectations that are both rigorous and consistent. So we we relied on our teachers to design programming that met their needs, but we really didn't have any guidelines for them to work from. And so, you know, that falls on administration to to create those those expectations. We also assumed when we started in March that one size fits all. Anytime that we approached an issue, we approached it as a PK through 12 issue. We learned from this survey that one size doesn't fit all and we need to adjust our remote learning by grade spans, if you will. PK through four, our elementary group, five through eight, our middle school group, and nine, 12 for our high school group. As, you know, just as an example, relearning Fridays was very successful at the high school level, but really had very little use at the K through four level. Our teachers at the elementary level would have preferred, based on conversations I've had with teachers, to have been able to continue to teach rather than reteach. So the older the students get, the more relearning Fridays makes sense. We approached our master schedules as if we were, this is another piece that we've learned. We approached our master schedules as if the kids were in school. That doesn't work in remote learning. We really needed to, we need to redefine the master schedule as it fits relearning and as it fits the grade level we're addressing. So that that is something that we learned in the survey and through the experience that we just went through. We also need to make sure that our Unified Arts and Encore classes are treated like the rest of the curriculum. So in some cases, the arts, if you will, the PE classes were treated as an afterthought. In other cases, they were integral to the curriculum. So making sure that we have a consistent approach to Unified Arts and in our Encore classes will be important should we go back into remote learning. We need to continue to refine expectations in training and Schoology. Actually, Schoology was well received by parents, but even more so by the students. The students appreciated the the platform. It brought consistency to the expectations, but there's room to improve there as well. For example, when we went into remote learning, there wasn't parent access to Schoology. If we go back into remote learning, that's something we need to include in the process. And also the integration of Power School and the entering of grades needs to be done far more regularly, not just in terms of uploads between the two programs, but in terms of physically entering the grades. We need to place a lot more focus on student-teacher interaction. I will tell you that Suzanne invited me into a conversation with five of her seniors about a week and a half ago. And and I compared their reaction to the survey reaction. And I will tell you that in every case, students, when they are meeting with teachers and talking to their teachers, feel far more motivated. So a clear expectation on how often we meet with our students needs to be implemented should we go back to remote learning. Going on, we we need to have a consistent expectation for synchronous learning. So, you know, some teachers did synchronous learning, some teachers did video lessons, both of them important. But again, going back to the student reaction to the survey, anytime that they were with their teachers, they felt like they were connected to the school. So we need to make sure that synchronous learning is happening as well as asynchronous learning. We have to find ways for students and teachers to interact on social immersion, excuse me, social emotional learning activities. Again, the students were incredibly clear. They loved all the activities that related to social emotional learning. But when those activities were done by their classroom teachers, they were indicating that it was far better. For example, if you went down through that survey, you know, every other approach to SEL is in the 10% plus or minus range. But when you hit the approach that involves teachers, it dramatically goes up. So I think our our students are definitely telling us that they they really enjoy the interaction and want the interaction with their teachers. I think that our, Al will appreciate this one. Al, actually, we got 11% too much communication. So I thought that probably would ring your bell. But the communication efforts as a district and across the district were well received by parents. There are areas that we need to improve on. But I think that, you know, the fact that a small percentage of our parents are saying, we got too much, is a good indication that we really did a great job in in communicating at the central office level between Todd and I and Catherine and Sue at the building level. But there's still, as always with communication, ways that we we can improve. We put a lot of effort into making sure that for our support staff, that PPE materials were available and used faithfully. But we were still told by our support staff, not everyone is following the rules. So making sure that supervisors are insisting always that social distancing and appropriate hygiene and masks are used faithfully is an important component on keeping our staff safe. The open responses are mind-boggling. I mean, truly hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of of thoughts that people shared. They range from, you know, wonderful to horrific. And so, you know, there's a lot to glean from the opening, the open response questions. The one question that I really wanted to bring the board's attention to was the question about comfort in returning to school in the fall. And so each group, parents and guardians, students and teachers and support staff, would ask the question about how comfortable, knowing what they know today about COVID-19, how comfortable would they be in either sending their children to school or coming to school? So 18% of our parents said at this point they would be uncomfortable. So if you take, round that up to 20%, that's over 400 children, assuming that everybody has, you know, a couple of kids in school. So that's 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 a big number. When we looked at the students, only 10% of them felt uncomfortable. Not a surprise because, you know, kids at this age see themselves as immortal. And then when we went to our teaching staff, it was around 20%. So then the next part of that question is knowing what you know about COVID-19. What is your comfort level if you? So the first question was, I would not send my child to school or I don't want to come to school. The second part of that question is, well, you know, knowing what you know, what's your comfort level? It jumps, discomfort level in this case, jumps to 47% of parents, 45% of students and 56% of staff at this point would be uncomfortable. So, you know, clearly, this is a big issue for us. It's a big issue across the country. The latest national poll shows 69% of parents uncomfortable with sending their children to school in the fall. So what I said to Todd and Catherine and Sue today is we need to ask this question again in mid-July and we need to ask this question again at the beginning of August. Because this particular question has a tremendous sway over, you know, what option we're able to go forward with. So those are my initial reactions. Haven't had about 24 hours to go through the survey. I thought it was rich in information and in important for the discussions that administrators are having right now about building a plan for school in the fall. So I have a couple more pieces to this, so I want to stop at the survey level and just answer any questions the board has.
Denise?
So I'm, in terms of the schedule, I'm wondering if you can give an example of what was meant by, you know, doing, like, it didn't work out in terms of thinking of it in terms of the school day?
Sure, I can give you an example, Denise. When we went into remote learning, Suzanne Filippone changed her master schedule so that students had two periods a day instead of four. And then the day that she had that was, I believe it's a six-period day or even a seven-period day, she eliminated completely. And so on any given day, the kids were doing half of their workload. Structurally, we didn't do anything like that at the middle school or the elementary school. And and I think that plays into the issue of our students not feeling like they had time to do music or art or phys ed. And so changing the master schedules so it fits remote learning and is an important part of of visiting remote learning again if we have to in the fall. Any other questions from the board?
Michael?
A couple of things. I think that you did hit on a really important point in terms of what are the, what are what are the community students, staff, parents feeling about the fall? I think that it's hard to answer that question without having some more idea about what structure the district might put in place. If you ask me that question based on how things worked on March 13th, you know, where where kids get on a school bus with potentially kindergarten through 12th grade on there, they go to school, they mix with four or five grades at recess, at lunch in the school building. They have large classes in different environments versus if there's a scenario where, you know, some of the things we've kicked around in past meetings, I know you're looking at with with the with the leadership team, Jim, of, you know, you know, focused, yeah, different transportation model or if we're going to put specific PPE or certain other requirements, health screening in place. If you were to say, given these three things or these several things in place, then how do you feel about that? I think we would get a much different set of answers there.
I couldn't agree with you more, Michael. This question at this point is really just based on their current feelings. Once we have specific approaches to share, I do, I agree with you that the response will change. And then it depends on also what's happening in the in the bigger society. If COVID-19 does have an upswing in the middle of summer, it could have a dramatic, no matter what we did for trying to provide safety in the school, it could have a dramatic impact on in the negative about parents wanting to send their their children to school. So it's it's a, to me, of all the questions asked, it's the it's the it's the big one, you know? If 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 parents aren't going to send their children to school, then, you know, it forces us, well, assuming the state even allows us. I mean, that's the other issue. We don't know what what the state is going to allow, how flexible they're going to be in the fall. If massive numbers of parents simply say, no, we want to stay in remote learning because that's that's where we feel safest, is is the state going to even allow that option? We don't know. The state will be giving some guidance by the end of June. And that will hopefully be helpful. I will tell you that Catherine Plord is actually on the steering committee for the commissioner and and Josh and Felicia and one other staff member, whose name is going to come to me right now, are also on the subcommittees for the state. So Oyster River has a really strong representation on the transition team for the commissioner. So I, every time that we do one of these meetings, Catherine always has another nice tidbit to throw in saying, this is what they're talking about and this is this is another thought they've had and so forth. So it's really, it's really terrific. It's Heather McEnoch, that's the fourth person.
Great. Another thing, I I think it's interesting that you highlighted the need to differentiate between different grade levels. I wondered if, I don't even know if this is possible, the way the data comes out of this survey platform. But could you share with us later, especially the parent survey, because it had the largest number of responses, broken down between, you know, one set by elementary, one set by middle school, one set by by high school? So we can kind of see how those things changed?
Yeah, I can ask Todd. Todd was my survey master on this. And so what capacities we have on earth, but I'll ask him that question.
Great, thank you.
I can wait now if you'd like. We can definitely do that, yes.
There you go.
So I'm wondering if we should put this on the agenda for the next meeting as well, when we have a chance to read through the survey, you know, see whether people have, because it's all kind of hitting us. I mean, I I read your memo, but I didn't have time to go into the detail of the survey. So I'd like to see this maybe on the agenda and what people could have their own responses or further questions. How's that sound?
I would love to do that. I I just didn't want it sitting in my lap, knowing I had all of this information. I tried to turn it around really fast, Tom.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, I'm not I'm not criticizing. I'm just thinking it'll be good to have some time to look it over. Al?
One of the things that was really critical, at least I found that you touched on, was Schoology. Because for all parents, I mean, as a high schooler, I would look over what the assignments are. And so we, I think we we kind of didn't do a great job on the process of the rollout of of Schoology. And by that, I mean, the board has been, we've never actually seen Schoology unless you've done it as a parent. So we approved Schoology based upon a recommendation without ever actually looking at Schoology. It's kind of like buying a car without ever looking at it. And so
That was one of those items that was on the agenda that we lost when we broke out to remote learning. We were going to have Celeste and the crew come in and do a presentation, and we certainly can bring that back.
Well, it's even more than that. It was like the board was detached from from the process as a whole. Whoever was on the technology committee should have been embedded and had a chance to see it. And it would have given the board a presence in it and would have helped roll it out so the board understood it. Instead, it's acted in isolation. The board has no idea how it works. Parent, I mean, again, we're at the next step. Parents don't know how it works and it's going to become critical. So I think how Schoology works and everybody understanding it is is critical in a remote learning environment. And so that needs to move to the top of the to-do list.
Well done.
Kenny? Kenny, do you have a hand up? I'm sorry, Kenny, did you have a comment or? I've lost him. Kenny?
Yeah, I I've I've missed half the meeting. My computer freezes. I don't hear sound. And I've been in conversation with Alex and he doesn't know what to do. So I'm pretty much not here. I'm sorry. I've rebooted it a few times and I keep losing it. So I'm going to just check out because I I missed the entire flow. So, sorry.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, okay.
So maybe the minutes should indicate Kenny's leaving the conversation at this point?
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry about that. So we'll have another crack at this, maybe the next meeting when we'll have a chance to look at the the survey. Is that right?
And so I just reinforced with the board that I didn't edit anything in your survey. There's stuff in your survey in the comments section that I would never put out in public. So what you have is an unedited confidential version of the survey. Tomorrow, when I put out the survey results, I'll use the select response pieces to share with the community. But I won't be sharing the comment sections with the community because sometimes students are identifiable in responses and sometimes individual staff members are identifiable in responses. And so that, those are both protected categories. It's not that I'm trying to hide anything from the community. The highlights I gave you are, you know, indicative of the responses we got. But there is privileged information in the survey results that you received.
Okay. So moving on?
Great. Great. Um, so, um, the other thing that we've been working on, well, there's two issues that I just want to bring to the uh, board attention. So, um, like the state, uh, we have set up transition uh, committees at the SAU level and at each building level, which I shared with you the last time. Um, each group has generated literally hundreds of questions that, um, they feel uh, need to be, um, answered in order to open in the fall. And we all agreed to put them under very specific categories. Uh, technology, uh, social, emotional learning and mental health, instruction, uh, communication, logistics, safety, and then, um, special education, staff needs and, uh, parent needs. So, uh, that is in process. So we have the survey results. We have the committees having generated hundreds of questions that, uh, are important to answer. And then on the fifteenth, we'll be taking that material and do a meeting with two revs who's working with our district and Portsmouth to help make sense of this daunting amount of information to try to carry it over into the development of a plan that you all will see, um, at the beginning of August. So I just wanted to let you know that that work is ongoing. And we've spent an enormous amount of time on it already and, uh, we'll be spending an enormous amount of time on it as we move forward, uh, into, uh, the summer. And then, um, the one other issue that I wanted to bring up was I have asked Andy Lathrop to develop a, um, soft opening of our fields and and and, uh, putting that to that plan for writing. Uh, the governor lifts the ban on, uh, tent. Well, we're hoping the governor lifts the ban on on the size of groups on on June fifteenth. Uh, Durham has begun opening its its parks. And, uh, both Todd and I were in conversation and we have agreed that we will be using the CDC guidelines in the state of New Hampshire and 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 following those guidelines faithfully. So I will have a draft of that for you, um, at the next meeting. And the other piece is, um, beginning to think about, you know, reopening the, um, SAU office. And we're at the beginning stages of that. So, um, lot going on.
Okay.
That's it, Tom.
Um, okay. So should we move down to the, um, Dell lease?
Yes. So Josh, you want to?
Josh? All right, I'm virtually walking up to the podium.
There you are.
All right. My wife will kill me if I don't blur the background. Um, all right. So let me get my other screen here set up. Um, so, uh, during this budget cycle, uh, we had planned to continue the work on the one-to-one program. We had done the middle school, um, last year and then this year. Uh, because the eighth graders that had been one-to-one that had moved up to ninth grade, um, we, um, decided to, um, extend one-to-one to ninth grade. And so we, um, in this upcoming year, we had to do tenth through twelfth grade. Um, so that's one of the items that's in this list, um, in this list of devices. There's actually four different models and I'm just going to start from the top and go down. Uh, I met with Suzanne Philippone and Celeste Best and Kathy Stetson, who's, uh, one of the computer teachers or computer science teachers and Kathy Pierce, who's the librarian. And we talked about the impact of one-to-one and what it would have on the technology in the library, the technology in the computer labs. And so they still felt there was a need to keep the computer labs specifically for some of the advanced programming they run. Uh, they have a partnership with Great Bay Community College for, um, some courses that use the Adobe suite of products. And they also, there's also some courses, I believe taught through the math department that use AutoCAD. Um, most of these programs require higher end hardware. Um, so the first item is, um, desktops that would go in the computer lab, the library, the video editing, um, or the video production space, um, to cover those needs and get them updated. I want to say there, the current ones that are in there are six years old, if I remember correctly. Um, so that accounts for the the first batch of computers. Uh, the second, um, group of computers is to replace the teacher laptops. Those were on a three-year lease that is ending this summer. And so, um, the these devices we give out to, um, teachers, administrators, tutors, um, nurses, case managers, uh, pretty much all of our professional staff. We also, um, there's also a need identified to keep a cart for the art department. Uh, they're starting to, um, are they've been offering digital photography courses and trying to squeeze them into the schedule in the the two labs has been a challenge. Um, so the high school felt having a cart would be give them the most flexibility. And then, um, as we've been going through, uh, the last few months, uh, our current, uh, the the laptops we currently have for staff, as we've had, um, issues, we've had to collect them, quarantine them, get, um, Dell repair to come out. And so just thinking ahead, I also threw in some spares. That way, if a teacher is down for any period of time, regardless if we're, um, in the pandemic or not, we can quickly get them back up and running. So there's a handful of spares. And then, um, the the bulk of the order is the one-to-one laptops for the high school tenth through twelfth. We also, in in planning for the budget, the Mastway also wanted to transition their fixed lab into a, um, a mobile lab, uh, like Mohammed is. So we also, uh, their devices, I believe, are also six years old in that lab. So there's also, um, laptops in there to replace, um, their lab and convert it to a a mobile lab. We typically give our head custodians laptops. Um, they are fairly light users, but with the, um, scheduling of the facilities, they they need to be checking regularly and especially at the high school, um, they're a major point of contact. So we make sure they have a laptop. After we went remote, um, one of one of the groups that we haven't given technology to, uh, historically has been the paras. Uh, but there was a real need. Uh, while we've been out, we quickly pulled, um, carts apart, got laptops ready for them. So we felt that moving forward, we should get devices for them as well, so they can better support our students. If we're, um, not back in the fall or something happens in the future. Um, but also just, you know, in their daily job, there's a lot that is going, um, electronic. Uh, and I think probably more so moving forward. Um, and then, uh, we also have some spares in there, um, the elementaries. In talking to them, they really feel that they're going to have a, um, especially if we're remote in the fall, they're going to have a a big request from families, um, for devices. But we've also had, uh, we've given out a lot of devices. And, um, we have some, we we've gone through all our spares at the middle school, um, due to a variety of things, some damage, some just broken. So we felt like we really needed some more spares, um, to help out in the fall. And then finally, another group, um, they have computers, uh, but it was a challenge with going remote. Our SAU staff, they mostly have desktops. Um, and our front office staff at the school. So, um, this is a little different laptop than when we give teachers. It's a larger screen. Um, most of the time they're they're dealing with, um, our finance program, but also things like Excel, Word. And so we wanted to give them something comfortable they could work on, whether they're in or out. This group typically also works on snow days or has the option to work. So this would, uh, provide some flexibility in that situation. So that's kind of the rundown. This is the largest order I've done. I I went through my records. And, um, the last one we did was the middle school order, and that was around a thousand devices. This is over 1,200 devices. So, uh, another busy, busy summer for us. Um, I had budgeted 210,000 for this lease, so I got it right up underneath that as close as I could get, um, for the yearly payment. Um, and I believe that's all I have. So if there's any questions?
I have a question.
Denise?
Um, it's kind of a related question. I was just wondering, um, as far as devices that did go out to families. And I know, I think at one point you said you weren't really sure what you, whether you were going to collect them, you know, beginning of the summer or how that was going to work. And I was just wondering, um, where that stands.
Yeah, so, um, in talking to my peers around the state, uh, most of the schools are collecting devices. So we decided to do a device collection, I believe. Um, information went out to the parents last week and this week. Um, the plan is, um, we'll look at the calendar. Um, next week, the eighth, ninth and tenth, there'll be drop-off times. And basically what we're going to do is we're going to have tables at each of the buildings and people will take their devices. We've asked them to make sure they include their charger, any accessories that we've we've loaned them, wrap them in a plastic bag with the child's name on it and just set it on the table. Our hourly, I believe the paras are still contracted past the fifth. And so they will be onsite and as the tables fill up, they'll move them into a a room inside. And specifically with the technology, we're going to let it sit for a week. My staff, um, won't be back in the buildings until the fifteenth and then we'll start going through them. We'll inventory them, see what we're missing, report that back to the principals. Any students that are participating in ESY or, uh, credit recovery at the high school, um, we're letting them keep their devices. We've been working with them over the past couple of weeks to address any issues with them to make sure they're ready to go. I want to say June or July sixth, six, oh, seventh, I think, is when ESY might be starting. Um, so we are going to collect and and go through them because just we don't know what's going to happen in the fall. So.
Other questions for Josh? Could it? Michael?
Just, uh, given the uncertainty about the fall, uh, and the the sheer number of what you've got in front of you here. I think it's clearly really important that we provision equipment for students and staff. But I'm wondering if it would make sense to wait on the desktops and the art cart, things that we might not be using if we're not going to be physically in the buildings in the fall. I'm sure that you'd be able to add those into the mix later on, probably at a pretty similar price to what we've got extended here. A little bit less for your team to do over the summer. And and if we don't come back, it's a it's a savings for what's going to be a tight economy.
How much, how much? I have trouble seeing. How much of it is the art cart?
The art cart is $23,000 and the desktops are 52.
The desktops are for the central office?
No, Kathy Stetson's, uh, lab, the writing center, the video production studio, and I believe six in the library. So if students are in those courses and and need a place to work outside of the course, they can go to the library. I anticipate that the desktops will show up first. Um, Dell manufactures all their desktops in, uh, Mexico. So those are probably going to show up, probably the quickest out of all of them. The rest of them are coming from, I believe they said China. They don't do freight anymore. Everything is being flown. Um, and so, um, yeah.
So.
Would that, I'm sorry, Josh, would that be the total cost of them or would that be the cost for next year?
That's the total, uh, retail price on them.
So I mean, I'm just trying to think what the savings would be if we didn't do it next year. It wouldn't be 50,000, would it be like what a third of that?
Yeah, I can, let me.
Be about 29,000 if it's a three-year lease, give or take.
Could be 20,551 for the desktops and the art cart for per year, for four years.
So, I question.
Denise?
So how much of an issue would that be, Josh, to put off on those two items?
Uh, well, I think it all depends what happens in the fall. Certainly, if we're not here, it it it's less of an issue. I think if we're in place or in, I I know one of the major issues with the physical labs is scheduling. Right now, we only have one lab that supports AutoCAD. And so they're struggling with the schedule and making sure they can get it in there and offer all the courses that they want to offer. So, um, by adding an additional lab, um, they were really hoping to, uh, free up the schedule. I think we can probably squeeze some more life out of some of the hardware. We can keep that one lab running. Uh, we may need to purchase some hard drives, but that would wouldn't be too low. But I think the bigger challenge is if we are back in session and we don't have the desktops, the high school's schedule for some of their courses could be, um, pretty tough. But I can certainly talk to Suzanne about that.
Can I ask you a question, Josh? Since since you already said that the laptop or excuse me, the desktops are made in Mexico and are the fastest turnaround time. Um, in theory, could we hold off to say late July when we had a better sense of what the fall schedule would look like? And if needed, order them and, uh, the hope would be, I mean, if you if you ordered those machine, those desktops right now, when do you think they would come in?
I think two weeks, uh, two weeks ago, I want to say they were on a five-week. That that was the turnaround time was five weeks. Um, as we get more into the summer, um, I I know the laptops are are really tough. Um, one of the the student devices, I think, were on a 75-day turnaround. Um, so I'm
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
No, that's okay.
So I was going to say, if it's if say, even if you gave yourself a six-week turnaround time, you could do mid-July when we had a better sense of what was going on. And you would still get the, um, the desktops in theoretically by the beginning of the school year. And it would also hopefully take some pressure off of you, as Michael's alluding to, with all those laptops that you're trying to configure. And we could work around that in the future.
Does it change your price point at all on your, um, on your, uh, bid, Josh?
That's what, that's the only thing I'm concerned about and I don't know. Um, I know originally when I asked for quotes, they put each device on a separate quote. And because they were all different dollar amounts, there was a different, um, lease rate, and so they were different. Um, if we're only talking about, you know, a $20,000 a year difference, it does put it under the 200,000 mark. I don't know. It it could. I may need to get a new quote and I just, I don't, I'm assuming that would have to come back to you guys to approve.
So what what's our time, what's our timeline on this? Don't we have to approve this? I mean, don't we have to act fairly quickly on this?
The laptops with a 75-day turnaround. So let me tell you what I told Josh in relation to the laptops. The laptops are supposed to go back in August. I told him they're not going back in August to to tell Dell we need an extension because I don't trust the, uh, turnaround numbers that we're getting from Dell. Not that they're being dishonest, but the supply chain has been severely disrupted. And we really need to figure that it's 70 days is the best case, um, on laptops. The desktops coming from Mexico, you know, not nearly as as a bigger deal. But the problem is that it's all mixed into this bid for tonight. And we really do need to act on the bid in order to get those laptops ordered. So you could make a motion to approve it without those particular devices and and come back in July, as Al suggests. But we do need to get the bid going because of the laptops.
I just wonder whether, I'm sorry, I just wonder whether it makes sense to, for $20,000, we are going to need these at some point. You know, so whether this makes sense to do that, do it now and not wait and then have another bid out and then have to do it again in July. It it just seems to me it's it's cleaner to do it, to do it now, uh, and to and to and to just to approve it as as presented. That's what I would prefer.
Can I ask you a question, Josh? So if we approved everything but the $20,000 and then you went back to Dell and asked them saying like, hey, and then you went back to Dell and asked them, saying like, hey, would it change the price point of those desktops? Bring that back to, and say, look, if it does, then, you know, we'll bring it back to the board and approve it at the next board meeting. But, you know, as I'm saying, you'd have everything approved, and it would, still, we'd find out if the bid was, was off. It's not as clean, but.
Are you suggesting that, Al, just clarification, are you suggesting that we approve the bid price? And then if the desktops are, that you, I, I guess what I'm asking is to, rather than coming back and doing that judgment to Josh and I, if, if it's no big deal, then we'll pull the desktops out. If it turns out it's going to change the price point dramatically, then we leave them in. Just trying to, trying to make sure that we can get this order going.
I'm fine with that.
So could a motion be to approve the, approve this as presented with the, with the understanding that Jim just made? Would that be acceptable?
That's fine with me.
And when Josh has that information, I can just send it out to the full board and say, this is what we learned, and this is the decision we made as a result. So you don't have to wait till the next meeting, unless Dell takes forever to get back to Josh. Sometimes Dell is a pain in the butt to deal with, because the turnaround time just on information for Josh is, is lengthy. But we'll, we know.
Yeah, Dell Financial, it will be very quick. The quotes are, it's like buying a car. But Dell, the finance people are, are very quick.
I just, I guess I'm just concerned, you know, with, given the supply and, and all sort of the upheaval that we have already. It sounds like Suzanne is already banking on having these devices to offer sections of courses if we do go back. And, you know, if we say, okay, we're gonna wait, and then it turns out, yep, we're going back to school, but now we can't get the devices in time. That's gonna seriously mess up the high school schedule. I, and I, I kind of agree with Tom that for $20,000, I, I'm just not sure it's worth. I mean, I know we're trying to find places to cut, but I'm just really concerned that that would really mess up the high school schedule if it turned out we were coming back and we couldn't get those devices in time. So I, I guess, I, I, I would like to go ahead and, and make a motion to go ahead and approve the bid as presented and see what happens with that. So that's my motion.
Move by Denise, is her second?
I'll second.
Yeah. Discussion on this? Further? Okay. Kenny Runners left. Denise Day?
Yes.
Dan and Klein?
Yes.
Brian Cisneros?
Yes.
Al Holland?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
No.
Tom Newkirk?
Yes.
So that's, it's approved as presented. Thank you, Josh. Finance committee updates. Al?
So the finance committee met last Wednesday. And we started off, and if you have not received the information or have not looked at the backup, please do, or you could have Sue send it to you. She presented us with four pieces of information. The first was, we went over the trust and emergency funds. And when you look at the trust and emergency funds, I'm gonna take out the special education fund, which is a half million dollars to deal with move-ins. We have a little over a million dollars to use to offset. So that is good. One of the funds does require us, and I can't remember which one it was, to put it as a warrant in front of the voters. So that's the first piece of news. The second was an update on the fund balance for 2020. Right now, it's currently a million dollars, but Sue needed some money to finish out the rest of the year. So we're projecting it to be about $750,000. You may remember that we're committed to giving 400,000 of it back to the towns. So that would, would give us $350,000 to, to potentially put into our reserve funds. The next was the five-year revenues. Revenue is, is a tricky thing to project, because no one really has a clear idea of what the revenues are gonna be. We asked Jim to run some scenarios. If, for example, we, Lee and Madbury lost the extra money that they got, what would that looks like, look like as, as a tax impact? Finally, we got the Barrington tuition revenue, and it's going to be an additional $280,000, which is good news. I think we had a bounce back in terms of enrollment, which is positive. Go ahead.
Now, can I ask you, is, what, what, what did we, in terms of, you know, anticipated revenue when we created the budget? What did, what did we put in? Do you remember? Is it, were we anticipating 40 or 40 students?
We were anticipating 40, yes.
40, so this is nine in addition to what we anticipated.
Yeah. So, I mean, again, the revenue from the Barrington tuition is, is really good news, I'll say. So, again, that's the kind of knowns that we have. In terms of, Jim mentioned, also in the packet is the facilities department end-of-the-year extra funds consideration, which is $231,415. And that's a list of things that if we had extra money, that we could spend them on the capital improvement front. We had it placed in your packets, so you guys can all look at it. And then no decision would be made until the, the next board meeting. Again, the hope is that the maximum amount of money that we could transfer into our emergency, emergency funds is what we want to do. One outstanding one that was there that, that we can talk about, or Suzanne can pitch, is the high school cafe chairs. There's 415 of them for $16,000. Again, they can make a pitch and see if we want to spend the money. The next thing then was the board had submitted to us some questions, and we tried to work through some of the questions. Short-term one, which is, Michael asks, is what expenses or capital items could be deferred out of the 2021 budget? And in our emails, just before we came in here to read, Jim Rizicky went over some of the things that he was working on. And we were asking, were there any capital improvement projects that we could put off? Looking over his thing, even with the ones that he had, it was about $100,000 extra that he had. And we were gonna have Jim come in and talk to us about the projects at hand. The, one of the long-term goals we went over, which is, what would the budget goal of 2020 be? And of course, that is, well, it's just premature right now. There's so many unknowns that we figured we'd try to tackle what some of the knowns were. Michael also asked about the structuring of the budget goal. And I think I also kind of interpret that, what is the budget process actually going to look like? I, I don't think having just one end-of-the-year October meeting is gonna be effective, that we come back to you and begin to develop a series of scenarios that's somewhat similar to what the Durham Town Council did, where this is what one thing looks like, this is what another, and it's gonna force us to make some tough decisions. Tom asked some questions about what to expect from the state. Well, we don't know what to expect from the state. I think that's what everybody, the towns and the school district are all thinking. In terms of tax collection and how much, again, we, we really don't know yet. Our Durham's tax collection bills are due July 1st. We've given a one-month interest-free period of time. So we'll, as we gather that, we can collect that information from the towns. The other thing that kind of ties together was of smaller kindergarten classes and primary classes, and then the retirement incentive. And so the question really would be, could we use the retirement incentive to not replace a teacher at the elementary level? Or is there any other places that, with the retirement incentive, there could potentially be a position that we didn't replace? The last of the questions was, how should the pandemic affect the upcoming negotiations? We have two bargaining units we're looking at. We are looking at the bus drivers, and we're looking at the paras. And I, I think, I suggested, I threw that to Jim, that we really need to sit down and talk with them. I'm having a hard time thinking about how to come up with a, with an equitable contract. I mean, it may be that it's structured so that it's a lower raise for the first year, and in the subsequent years, it's higher. But I, I think we have a lot of work to do to kind of figure that out. And so the next meeting is next Wednesday, and we'll gather some more information, and we'll bring it back to you.
So Al, if I could just piggyback your last comment on negotiation. So one of the questions that I have for the full board that we all, you, you guys would need to greenlight is reaching out to the two unions and seeing if they want to sit and discuss the contracts over the course of the summer, as opposed to waiting until, you know, mid-fall.
I, I would just add to, Al, you touched on the, the retirement incentive and where that might fit in. One thing that we did discuss, not, not with any detail, but just the concept that the timing of when the board decides on whether or not a retirement incentive will be offered next year is gonna be important in terms of how effective that is. So that's, I, I think the, the takeaway message from me at least, and correct me if I interpreted this wrong, was the earlier we decide on that, the more effective it is. Give this, the staff that might be wanting to take advantage of that more time to think about it and, and give us more visibility into what the impact is.
Dr. Morris, when would you, when would you, or maybe this for the committee, when, when would be a good time to do it? I mean, the earlier the better. Are we talking about maybe first meeting in, in July? Next, next meeting, do we have it in June? Kind of what's, what's the, what's the timeframe you're thinking about?
Well, I mean, I would try to do it in, in June, at least, get a read. I think that's what Al is, is trying to get in terms of, you know, all of these pieces, of course, all fit together as we go further and further in, in time. So at least having a conversation with both units and trying to get a sense of, you know, where, where they're at, and, you know, kind of outlining roughly what Al is suggesting and, and seeing if the receptive is gonna, I think we, the earlier we do that, the better.
I guess, I was talking about the teacher incentive.
Same thing. I mean, Michael is dead on. The, whether we do it in the next meeting or even the first meeting, the meeting in July, I think the more, the more we project that and then finally act on it, the, the better it is for us. Because our teachers will step forward, there, you know that there are a number of teachers, because the Guild did a survey for us in, towards the end of last year. So I think the earlier the better, and, and that plays into developing of the budget. So if we know, for example, there's, say, a dozen people who are going to take us up on the retirement incentive and, and then following Al's idea, and say, say, a couple of those people, based on student enrollment, we don't have to replace at all, then that provides the board a pretty hefty in, amount of money to start thinking about the next budget. So I think the earlier the better.
So, so I guess, in terms of the budget, I'm sorry, in terms of the agenda, then that, put that on the agenda possibly for the 17th.
Okay.
So to, to just come back to that, Tom, on the 10th, what we're trying to do is to, to get a sense of who's eligible for retirement in, in what areas. And so, and not, you know, violate privacy. So that really is on the docket for our next budget workshop. So we're gonna try to work through that, and so we would come back the 17th. And hopefully, we'll be able to give you some better sense, rather than just blanket say, let's do a retirement incentive, give you some information, so we're a little bit more informed about what it looks like.
Good, good, good. Denise?
So to kind of backtrack, I'm, I'm a little bit confused about the memo that we got today regarding the, the facilities capital account from Jim in terms of the projects that are sort of in process. I, I, I don't, I'm confused about how that all fits into this, because it looks like all these projects are either already in process or very, very close to starting. So I'm not seeing where any of that could, I mean, was the suggestion to, to stop some of those projects? I, I was just really confused.
The finance committee wanted to know where Jim was on the capital projects with, for, for the budget. And so, you know, I asked Jim to go through and identify the projects and where he was in various stages. And in some cases, he's well into those projects, and other cases, he's about to start, as you indicated. So in addition, Sue and I asked him, you know, if that's the case, then based on what you're getting for bids and so forth, what's the savings? So that, that letter was generated for the finance committee. And the finance committee asked if I had put it in your packets tonight along with the C I P list, just as a, a piece of information for the 17th. So it's, it's not an actionable item tonight. It's really just trying to make sure you had information that the, the finance committee was going to have. It was more along the lines of timeliness, Denise. There were concerns that, you know, normally, finance committee needs, they report out to the board, board responds, finance committee needs and so forth. And the, the issue that we're facing is one of timing. And if we were going to ask the board to do anything on Jim's list, the finance committee felt it was really important that you have the same information they were going to get next week, tonight, so that the full board had a chance to prepare for two weeks.
So, but, so basically, these projects that are sort of are in process, there's savings there. And that's really the value of, of this list. We're not looking to try and stop any of these projects.
Well, I think that, that, so it was a motivation. Had Jim not been, you know, had Jim not actually started projects, the conversation could have turned to, can we, can we delay this project as opposed to move it forward? And that still may be a conversation that the finance committee has next week, as we look at, at this work. So it's really just the way that the, the year is ending, and we just wanted to make sure that the full board had the same information the finance committee was going to get, Denise.
Yeah, because I'm not seeing how there's room to stop these projects when most of them are either started or are anticipated to start before we even meet again.
Right. And I, and when the finance committee asked that question, I had no clue where Jim was on these projects. And so she put that message together for me and Sue, and I'm sharing it with you.
It's just us doing, it's, Denise, it's just us doing due diligence on any places that we could save.
Okay.
And also the commitment the finance committee made, Denise, so that you guys, the people, the board members who are not on finance were never caught short that the finance committee was acting on issues. And then you guys would come back to say, where did that come from?
Right.
You know, it's trying to make sure the left and right hand always know what's going on.
Thank you.
I have a question for Al. So if we anticipate a possible fund balance, just hypothetically, of 750,000, and we've promised the towns 400,000, it seems to me that our options are, A, you could give the towns more than 400,000. You know, you could send it back to the towns.
Yep.
Or you could send some of it back to the towns and put some of it in a, one of our capital, one of our accounts that we would use to defray costs next year. Or you could put, you know, or, or also another combination would be to take care of some of those capital improvement projects that could have been finished this year. And so, so some of that 750,000 could be used for that. So that, is that kind of the kind of decisions that you would see us making?
Absolutely. Yeah, that, that's, that's exactly the decision we're there. So I, again, hopefully, we can clarify some choices for you, or at least recommendations for you on the 17th. We'll go through, and, and I think that's actually helpful, the way you just said it, that we'll go through some of the options that we can lay on the table.
Okay, great. You guys have done a lot of work. Thanks, thanks so much. Is there anything else for the questions to the finance committee? The next thing relates to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just a second. I, I'd like to back up, because it looks like we skipped two items under the superintendent's report, which I just, where's my minute? Okay. Summer school update, that we, that was.
Wanted to make sure you guys knew that the, the high school is doing remote learning and helping about 120 youngsters this summer. The middle school is providing the same resources that we have in the past in terms of helping youngsters in the area of mathematics. And new this year is because we now have the multi-tiered support system, we have identified elementary students, about 30 total between the two schools that are on tier three that will provide, we're going to offer support for over the summer. So I, I, I think that that's a, a pretty comprehensive summer school program, given the fact.
That's all, that's all remote?
Special ed is going to offer eight students services onsite and not at the same time. You know, one, one-on-one based on the significance of their disability. So these would be the children who have severe physical or, or mental disabilities. And so Catherine is going to provide one-on-one service either through contracted service or through resident program.
And then the other item that the new middle school update, was there anything in it that you had planned to? Cause we skipped over that agenda item also.
That one I kind of moved over quickly because the middle school, the board had, most of the board had gone onsite and my report would have been on the work related to the earthwork going on. I think when I was there Tuesday, they had eight of the wells drilled and they were, they have the back wall foundation done. And so the earthwork, the earth, the con- subcontractor and the earthwork was totally amazing. Really, really moving that, that project.
In your packet, so moving down to the item that I added, as we expected, there was a letter from the Lee Selectman addressed to me, raising some questions about actions that the board has taken and also urging us to be frugal and to, you know, communicate and work with them as, as the budget process moves forward. So I need guidance from the committee, from the board, how to proceed with that. My first instinct was to write, you know, to compose a letter in response. But as it occurred to me, and, and I think Al, you guys may have talked about this as, as well, I don't think we should be getting into a situation where we're communicating with one town and questions that they have. We should probably, you know, create some kind of system where we're getting the same kind of information out to all three towns and probably not via a letter, you know, that responds to certain issues that were raised. That we should, we should have something more comprehensive that's presented to the town. So I could see two, two ways of doing this. One would be kind of to use a traditional way where we go to each of the towns. You know, we may be, maybe members of the finance committee, maybe chair, you know, the superintendent and present and take questions. The other would be maybe to create a kind of a, a group that would get together periodically that might have representatives from each town. And then we could share the information that we're developing, such as the information that like Al was just presenting to us. So as we develop, as we move forward with the budget, we could present, you know, communicate that to the three towns. It just seemed to me not a good, good response to start going town to town, you know, just, just responding to Lee when that information's relevant to everybody. So, so I, I guess I'd like just to get a sense of what, how we should respond to that.
Do you want me to take a crack at it? So I, I've thought about this for, I don't know, a week. And it's odd because, it's odd because we actually, you got, at the town council meeting, we actually kind of responded to the Lee letter. We all saw the Lee letter. And we talked about some of the things that Durham has done right now fiscally, which is like we held off on hiring a police officer. We've held off on filling the GIS position. We've really held off on overtime. And so, I mean, I think as I thought about it, I mean, does the school board want to know what we held off on? So I think really a, a simple thing to do is just to pass along the agenda and the minutes and the information from the finance committee to the three towns. That will answer some of the questions that, that they had already asked about fund balance and what are we trying to defer? And if the towns had questions, as Todd, as Tom is alluding to, maybe we could have periodically a time where we sat down and talked about what have you found or how is your revenue situation or how's your fund balance? And, or if you had questions that you didn't understand what the finance committee was doing, that we could do it that way. And that would just be a simple way to have the information flow to the three towns. That's my two cents.
So, so something like a, you know, a fact sheet as to information, like what we're doing, what, you know, the kind of information we're gathering, the kinds of, you know, kind of tools we're using, something like a fact.
Or even just our agenda and our, our minutes. Pass that along. It'll give them all the things that we're going. And if they have questions, the towns do, then submit it to the finance committee and hopefully we're going over it. We can, we can answer it.
Other thoughts?
Al's, Al's idea is very practical. I, I think that in the finance committee, when we meet, we could add the question that, that we wouldn't normally hit in the finance committee is why we're not delaying the middle school. Just add it to our agenda in that way that one is answered. But I think the idea of, of the agenda for finance committee and the minutes and then, you know, a meeting periodically really would be a very effective way of engaging the three towns and, and them all having the same information. I, I think that's a great idea.
I, I just wonder whether the minutes are too discursive, you know, to, to read through four pages, you know, I think whether, whether we could have something that's a little more coherent than.
We can always do an executive summary of the minutes.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you know, the minutes tend to be verbatim. We can always capture the highlights of the minutes and instead of just giving to, not just to the towns, but the, the, the board as well, have a cover letter for the minutes that summarized all the minutes underneath. And then people don't have to figure out what you guys talked about. And kind of what Michael does with the board agenda, you know, kind of capturing the highlights and use that as a cover letter to the minutes.
I think too with the, the tone of this letter, which is rather aggressive, a little too aggressive for my liking, but I, I think just the tone itself leads us that we should probably have a sit-down meeting with a representative from each town and us to at least come to a common ground or at least a common understanding. Maybe not a common ground, but at least a common understanding of what we're all doing. And, cause I think a lot of this is based upon assumptions and hearsay. You know, and there's a lot of questions in here that are very easily, would have been very easily answered if a phone was picked up and a call was made. And that's what, that's what frustrates me is that, you know, me being from the town of Lee, could they've easily have reached out to me. I know, they know Dr. Morse's phone number at the, at the district, you know, if they wanted to find that out. So I think we're kind of, I, I just think it would be a lesson of futility if we do letters and even, and I'm not against the minutes. I think they should see the minutes. I 100% agree with Al. But at this point, I think we, at, at a minimum, we should have at least one meeting where we all sit down, representative from each town. So we're not being unfair to anybody or kowtowing to one particular town and just getting on the same page, you know, lay it out on the table. It might be a rough meeting, but lay it out on the table and get it done and find out, you know, where the disconnect is. Cause I think it really is a disconnect going on here that, that somehow, and I don't know whose fault it is. I don't care whose fault it is, but I think we just need to deal with it and get it on the table. This is my, my two cents.
Yeah, I was just, so along the lines of what Brian is saying, I was just thinking to myself, I, I think how we frame the context of this ongoing process is really important at the outset. And that if we're going to be in the practice of, you know, sending along minutes or an executive summary of the finance committee's work, I think that's all really helpful. But I think at the outset that a, a more personal approach, that Dr. Morse is very good at, at the direction of the board would be the place to start to sort of, like Brian's saying, get, get everybody on the same page. Perhaps address in a more informal way, some of the, let's say misconceptions or concerns. And then establish an ongoing process of communication that really just demonstrates that good faith that, you know, Al and Michael were talking about earlier and just in terms of, you know, reviewing everything ongoing, everything upcoming, you know, making, making it known that we're making that good faith effort to look for opportunities to save.
So Dan, would you see this as like a us going out individually to each of the towns? Or would you see the three towns coming together for like a joint, some kind of joint meeting?
So I don't know that there's one way to do it. One thought that occurs to me is to either, you know, you, Tom, as the chair or the board directing Dr. Morse to reach out to the, the leaders, the chairs of the respective town boards to set up some sort of a meeting, whether it be remote or in person or on the phone, to sort of work through some of this stuff. And then maybe that sort of softens the tone of the conversation and gets us in a, in a better place.
No, and we were talking in the finance committee, we were thinking about inviting representation, representatives from the town into a finance committee meeting. I think that the credibility of the select and the council and the school board comes from elected officials sitting together during times of crisis. And people are seeing the economy right now as in crisis. And so there's great fear across the country. And obviously, you know, the town of Lee is articulating their fear in the, in the letter that, you know, we're not doing due diligence as a school system. And so I think that inviting them into a finance committee meeting would, you know, would, would address your issue, Dan, of, you know, let's bring them in upfront and let's have just an open conversation about how we're approaching the, the current budget and then, and the, and the next budget and possibly the budget after that. This could be a 24-month cycle before the economy, you know, gets on a strong footing again. So, you know, I would, you know, I would, I, I like the idea of elected officials sitting together. I have no problem doing it by myself, but I'm, I'm not the elected official. I'm the representative of the school system, just as Todd is of Durham. And you are all the representatives of the people. And so the credibility in the conversation comes, I think, from, from your positions as elected, elected officials.
So, so Jim, do you, would you see the entire, like invite each of them to send representatives to a meeting? Or should the entire select, you know, I'm just trying to think of the logistics of what we'd be asking.
I would do, you know, I would, I would invite representatives from each of the elected bodies. Otherwise the meeting gets, you know, really big. And since we're still in virtual land, that becomes problematic. You know, I would ask each town to, you know, send whom they feel is the person that would represent them best. And then, you know, in addition, if Todd and Julie and Eric want to come because they would be my counterparts, that's fine. But I think as, as Brian alluded to, there's, there's, in this letter, you know, basically a, a lack of understanding that, you know, the board has already started working on the budget. You know, the finance committee's existence is because we have serious concerns about the economy. And the finance committee is collecting data that help, will help the board put together probably the most frugal budget we've had since I've been here. And so I think that's the messaging. You know, we're sitting in, in May and, and June and we've already started talking about the next budget and the, and the budget, the budget war we just approved in March doesn't even start until July 1st. I mean, just the fact that the board has established this committee should send a strong, strong signal to all three towns that we recognize that the economy is scary right now and we have many of the same concerns they have, which Lee has outlined, you know, the concern about loss of state aid, the, the concern about people's ability to pay taxes. You know, and, and Al has, you know, articulated as has Kenny in the past. You know, it's not the July payment that most towns are worried about. It's the December, January payment. And, you know, the towns can provide us with a lot of good information. For example, I asked Todd Selig, what happened in 2008 during the Great Recession? How, how, how well were your tax receipts? And he actually shared that in the Great Recession Durham had a, a very small impact in relation to collecting taxes. So, you know, there's data that the towns have that can help inform Michael and, and Al and Brian, just as we have data that we can help inform them. So I, I don't want to get into an adversarial relationship. I want to continue, continue the partnership that we've had with each town. And I think Dan is right. That comes from human contact, whether it's virtual or in real life. And, and so I, I think that the idea of, of inviting people into a finance committee, which is what we talked about in the finance committee, just makes so much more sense than Sue and I doing, you know, presentations without you guys. Because it, they really want to talk to you. They want to know that you as elected officials are going to keep Sue and I in check. That's what they want to hear.
Well, I, I mean, it's, I mean, it's funny because again, this is one of those weird situations that Kenny and I run across two boards. And so we see the whole, I mean, I don't see all three towns, but I, I mean, I, I'm approving pipelines and stuff like that. So I think the commonality amongst us, there's two of them that are in my mind. One, there's a great deal of uncertainty right now. And so when we talked about it Monday, we have no idea what it's going to look like after July in terms of state revenues and everything. Right now we're okay. Are we nervous? Yes. Let's work on controlling what we can and we'll worry about the others as it comes along. And I think the second thing that we have in common is we're trying to preserve our essential services without killing the taxpayer. And I think that's the school side and the town side both have that exactly in common. We're trying to figure out how best to do that. And I think that's the commonality that we'll work together to, to try to address.
So would it be, except, I'm sorry, Michael? Go ahead. Michael? Can't hear you. Are you on mute?
I am on mute. So, so one of the other differences, I, everything else that is, I think, I think correct. We do have a lot of the same, same intents of what we're trying to achieve. There are also some structural differences in the way the school district budget operates compared to the way that the town budgets operate. And I think that getting into those details is a worthwhile part of this conversation that probably is best had at, at the, at the finance committee with representatives from the towns.
None of the least, which is like our budget starts January 1st and yours starts July 1st. It's like, so yeah.
So would it be, since it sounds to me like people would be agreeable to, I could respond to that letter, but respond to all three, all, all three town councils, it's, you know, select boards. And to invite them to send, you know, maybe the town, the town administrator plus one member of the select board or the council to a meeting of the finance committee. So we can share our process, the information we've gathered in our process for developing the budget and to listen to concerns that they might have about that process. So, you know, to get, to get something like that going. Now, is that agreeable?
Yep. Yeah, and I, I would add also that it, that's also the way you set it up, Tom. We are having the finance committee meetings as full public meetings, but also having one representative from, at least from Madbury and Lee, keeps it below the quorum for any of the four governing bodies.
Yeah, okay. But they could bring a, a board member and maybe the, you know.
Or an administrator, absolutely.
Staff member, either the finance person in charge of finance or the, you know, town manager or whatever.
So we would never go into that without Sue. So, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I will go ahead and do that. That, that's the way I respond and I'll respond to all three, all three towns. Okay?
Thank you. I think that's the best.
Okay. So it's, it's about 10 of, it's about 8:50 now. And I, I never anticipated having a board evaluation this late in, in the, in the me, in an evening. And I've been trying to get this to happen. I believe you, I'm not trying to avoid things. But I really think that probably to do it this time of night is not a good thing. And I think, so I'd like to propose we go through the rest of the agenda. I will get that on, we will get that done. Unless, unless, unless somebody feels we need to go, go forward with that. I, I think to do it, to do it this late is not a good thing. So.
I, I don't think you guys should replicate what we do on the Durham Town Council.
I also hope that we can have Kenny on board, uh, for that discussion.
Okay, okay. So you're all okay with postponing it one more time? Okay. Okay, so we have the, the master schedule, which we've seen and I think it's, we've, we've looked at it once. And so I think we, we could approve it tonight, I would think. looked at it once and so I think we, we could approve it tonight, I would think. One thing I noticed that's different that I think is probably a good thing is we have, I don't, in the past have we always had two August meetings? Is that typical? Because I, I seem to remember sometimes we've had one.
Yeah, I, I, I asked Wendy to do two this year. I...
I think it's a good, good idea, yeah.
Yeah, just given the, the, you know, it gives you an opportunity to address where we are in terms of opening school, knows Al alluded to earlier, you get some information at the beginning, you can process it and then parents will wait to see what the decision is going to be. And so I think two August is important.
Yeah, okay. I, I thought there was a reason for that and I thought, that's a good idea. Are there, are there questions, concerns, changes people would like to say and see of the schedule?
So as of right now, that meeting with Barrington is, is just way to confirmation, obviously, as it says, it's not set in stone yet.
Right.
The joint meeting? Okay.
Yes.
So if there's no concerns about it, could I have a motion to approve the, the master schedule? Denise?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Denise, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Brian? Other discussion on this? Okay, oh. So Denise Day?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Cisneros?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes. So 6-0, the master schedule is approved. So we, we approved the lease. Motion to approve the nomination of Mastway Special Education teacher. Yeah? Denise?
Um, I'd like to, if, if it's okay with everyone, I'll just go ahead and, and make the motion to approve all three positions that we are being asked to approve tonight. The Mastway Special Education teacher, the high school, school psychologist, and the middle school PE position for one year to cover a leave.
Okay, those three positions are moved as a block. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Michael. Discussion on these three? Hearing done. Denise Day?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Cisneros?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes. So it's 6-0, those three positions are approved. We have a motion to approve the middle school and high school fall coaches. Denise?
I'll make that motion to approve the middle school and high school fall coaches as presented.
Moved by Denise, is her second?
Oh, second.
Second by Brian. I just had a question, Jim, like what happens if we approve these and then, you know, there's no fall sports or something or, you know, do we, then prorate, do you come back and prorate them? How does that work?
We did that on the spring coaches, the varsity coaches, put in a, they document their time in preparation for a season. You might recall that Andy had presented, that they had put in 57 hours worth of time getting ready for the spring sports season. We did not compensate JV coaches or middle school coaches because they don't put in that preseason work. So if we ended up in the same situation, then, you know, that would be my recommendation. The fall coaches would probably be, well, they always are in, in working with kids in August, getting ready for the fall. So that's, that's how I would recommend that playing out, Tom, if that happens. This is a pretty optimistic nomination, so.
Yeah.
Part, part of it is looking forward to coming back, I guess.
Mm-hmm. Who isn't looking forward to coming back? Other questions on this? Denise Day?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Cisneros?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes. So the fall coaches are approved by vote of 6 to 0.
Thank you.
Denise, you want to take us through the policies?
Sure. This is for second read. We have policy EFA availability and distribution of health foods and EGAD copyright compliance and both of those are for second read.
Okay. Do you want to move those as a block?
Yes.
Okay, those two are moved as a block. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Brian. Questions on these? Hearing done. Denise Day?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Cisneros?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes. 6-0, these policies are approved for second read.
I did have one question about policy committee. I know last time we had talked about policy committee meeting and I'm not sure I actually have a date for that.
We, we have an established one, so why don't we give you a call tomorrow, Denise, and see if we can put a tentative date on, on, on the map and then we'll check the other two members and see if that works.
Okay.
So, future meetings, I assume the next meeting will be remote. I haven't heard any loosening of the regulations, so that will be on the 17th. And I think we're ready to adjourn.
Okay, a quick comment. I just wanted to, to give a shout out to Alexander. I think that the video production has really improved over the last meetings. It's been, it's been great, so thank you.
Thank, thank you, Alexander, for so many things, you know, what, what would we, where would we be without him? So could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Brian, second by...
Oh, second.
Second by Michael. Roll call. Denise Day?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Brian Cisneros?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes. So we're adjourned, folks. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.